Throw it out and this is my hope. So I ask everybody to focus on this next section called successes and recommendations. I want to repeat, we're not going to solve anything today, we're not going to argue about anything today, we're not going to hash out anything today. This is about putting everything on the table to determine what it is can we work on? What is that, what's working, what's not working in your opinion? And so I've asked everybody to come to this meeting and just share two things that you think are successful between the relationship, between the two bodies? And two things that you think would be, have some recommendation for improvement. The goal of this is just to try to find things that we all agree on and maybe even find things that we all disagree on. And that will help set our agenda for the next committee meeting and start going through what is sort of the biggest struggle to maybe the low hanging fruit. And so I'll, I don't necessarily need to go in a particular order. I'll just kind of open it up to whoever wants to jump into the homework assignment first and then go around the table. For those of you who may be, Mr. Broyles and the commissioners who have not necessarily been in the middle of it, you may just have perceptions or misperceptions, or you may just have things that you read and said, I don't understand this. This seems to go well, but I don't get this. So this is sort of free game of throw it out on the table and let's see what we come up with. Do I have any takers to want to start us off?
I'll go first if you.
Okay, so again, not going to solve it, we're not going to argue about it. We're just going to say here is something that I think is, start with your two successes, please, Mr. Rible.
Well, with the, with regard to the good.
Trying to speak up with the mic is a little bit hard, thank you.
We'll start with the good things first. Since we have changed administrations and we have started our, the new processes, Merit System Council has been very good at working with us at changing some of the job description problems that we have had to try to make sure that we opened up the availability to bid for jobs to people that were qualified to bid for jobs. For whatever reason, job descriptions over time had gotten so narrow that only very few people, a lieutenant here, could not bid for the captain's job somewhere else. And the Sheriff's banquet idea was, wait a minute, you know, if you're a lieutenant, you're a lieutenant, you ought to be able on this side with the appropriate amount of qualification you ought to be able to bid on the next higher rank. That way you don't create eddies where people can get to a particular position and have no place to promote to. And then you get a morale issue and you have somebody that's ready to quit instead of somebody that's still trying to work their way up. So that was, they've been very kind with that and they've been working with us very well. They'll probably be surprised to hear this, I like the way that they've changed some of the hearing stuff with regard to setting up a process in our appeal and disciplinary hearings to where both sides know what's going on. As I've said, I have been representing sheriffs since the mid nineties. No, I've been representing sheriffs since the mid eighties. And very frequently sheriff would go in and they wouldn't know what the other side was even arguing about. There would be an appeal that I've been terminated or I've had five days off and that's all we'd know. And we'd walk in and find out something bizarre was going on, we had no clue. They have set up a system to make sure we are aware of what the, of what the other side is saying. And that's, that's really good. And it's handy for us to know, okay, they're saying it's political, they're saying it's arbitrary, they're saying it's whatever. Very good things for us to have a fair and efficient hearing for them. And the bad thing, and it's the one thing that I'm focused on like a laser, is the inefficient onboarding. And that's not their fault, that is just the way the system works. We are taking way too long to get somebody from abstinence to getting on in the sheriff's office. If it takes five, six months to get somebody with the kind of competition we have from other agencies, that person's been employed somewhere else for three or four months before they ever hit to us. Whether it's in, in a law enforcement job or someplace else, these men and women work for money. They work to feed their families, they can't wait that long. So whatever the issue is, if we can, if we can steamroll those and get them to where we can get these people onboard quicker, then I think that, that my goal, that's not, we have other, other people have other goals, but that's, that's what I think.
There a second recommendation or do you want to just stick with the one?
I'm just going to stick with the efficiency, that, that's the, because the rest of it is, is minor stuff that can be worked out.
So if I've heard you correctly, and I just want to make sure I recap these, the successes that you're pointing to are job description changes that give more opportunity and hearings and processes that are more informative and process oriented. And the improvements that you would like to see, the one improvement is inefficiency of time and process in the onboarding. Yes, okay, just want to, I'm going to go through and recap as we go through to make sure I'm very clear on what it is. Thanks for breaking the ice, Mr. Rible, who would like to go next? First one to make eye contact, Mr. Melanex. I noticed you kept, if you don't, if you don't participate, you're getting.
I noticed you were looking at me kind of hard, yeah.
And at least try to speak as loud as you can into the mic.
So the, the, um, the chief kind of, a couple of mine was going to be the fact that, you know, myself going through three administration changes is, it's not always the smoothest. But the merit council's kind of been, it's just been smooth during that whole process. And then I was going to say.
So I'm sorry, say that again, the.
The, the fact that, like for me, I've been through, this is my third administration since I've been here. And, and the merit council's always been, it's always been smooth. There's no, no hiccups or things don't, don't, don't seem to change on their end with the administration changes from, from, from what.
There's consistency in their operations.
Sure, very much so. And, and they were very open to something else that Chief said about job titles that I, my unit was directly, I'm over as a forensics unit now, and my unit was directly affected by that. And we went to them with some changes and they were just almost immediately handled. So that was very much appreciated on my end. And then I kind of hit on it at the beginning, which would be one of my, I don't want to say negatives, what's my?
Recommendations.
My, not negatives, yeah. My recommendation was the fact that, um, our, our employees know that they're there to protect them with grievances and stuff like, that's pretty much it. That's what they know. They don't know the full dynamic of what all they actually do and the importance, you know. We're not an agency that you go in and then the next admin comes in and you don't have a job. You know, which is extremely valuable, especially in today's, today's world where we're recruiting these people. The fact that you can come here and you don't have to worry about an admin change getting rid of you is huge in law enforcement. So, but there's still a lot of things that our, our people don't know that, that they can do for them, that they do do. But the grievance, I've had some direct conversations with people that, that said, and without going into details into those tonight, that the grievance processes were almost handled on a, and I'll use their terms because, like you said, openness and honesty and everything was that they were just handled, two of them specifically were just handled whether they were heard, the grievance was heard just on a matter of opinion on, yeah, we'll hear it, or no, no, we're not going to hear it. Now, like I said, I still want to get, I still want to get plenty more facts on that before I go into those details. But it's one of the things that, like I said, when I went around and talked to people, that there was a couple of them that were, the grievance was there and they thought it was handled inappropriately. So that kind of stuff, if the facts support that fully, then obviously that's something that will need to be addressed also.
So to recap, two successes are the consistency in the merit council operations and the staff and the team that even through multiple administrations, they are focused, steady and professional. And that the changes with job titles allowed opportunities and promotion and you've got those are good and successful changes. Is that correct? And then improvements would be employees' education on what the merit system council is and, and what it can do for them and what resources they have at their disposal. And they're very uneducated in, in most parts about what it is and what it can do. And that potentially the grievance process could be handled in a more process way. It's an opinionated way in a sort of a, a more structural process than a yes or no based upon somebody's one opinion.
Right, yes, that's, and, and I didn't want to kind of mirror what the chief said, but, but the, because of what I'm directly affected by, with the job titles and then there again, the, the exact position I'm in now, I can't fill my positions in my unit until we have people to fill their positions. I hope that kind of extends without getting into great detail, but, so I, I'm kind of stuck in a position where my unit is, my unit's five people short right now because we can't, we're not getting people in fast enough to fill the correction slots.
So I'm going to, I'm going to put that as like a third thing almost as a.
Sorry, sorry.
No, 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 that's right. So backfilling, I'm just going to put that a little asterisk next to that as sort of backfilling positions as just something that is a concern. We may also get to things in this committee that are not necessarily things that we can solve by changing things or adjusting things, but we may say, we feel like this is an issue that everybody agrees on. And we might say, come up with some recommendations for how do we start figuring that. It may not be a processing and maybe just something we go back to the, maybe the administration and say, look, we really need help in this department. Or we go back to, in a budgetary sense, and say, we really need more recruiting money to be able to do X, Y, Z. So there are going to be things that are not necessarily going to be worked out, but we want to address, we want to make sure we keep a list of those. So, I didn't see which light came on first.
I didn't either, I did, but.
Okay, well, you will soon, so Ms. Gibbs.
I just want to clarify the grievance process as written, it doesn't fall on the merit council who's denying that, if I'm understanding correctly. Our grievance process as written, so if I have a grievance, then I take it to my supervisor. That supervisor then sends it on up the chain. Once that grievance is dead in the water per se, it never makes it to the merit council. That's the process which I've heard numerous complaints on. So if it was restructured within the merit council rules per se, then that would take our frontline supervisors out of it so that if we did, I mean, how am I going to complain on my supervisor to my supervisor? It doesn't work out.
Okay, while you have the microphone, would you like to offer your two successes and two improvement potentials?
Working relationships with the merit council over the past six years, we've been able to successfully add two additional employee representative positions. I filled that role by myself for, I think, the first term. And about two years ago, we were able to add an employee representative from corrections and also an employee representative from the civilian side. And with an agency this size, that, that, I mean, that was drastically needed, the merit council heard and they let us implement that. So that's one of the successes. And also, we were able to improve our testing procedures. Not only did we improve the testing procedures, we don't have to take a written test anymore. We actually take an oral assessment, which is just basically an oral test. And we also saved lots of taxpayer money by not having to purchase those tests. And some of the recommendations that I have, the job descriptions, yes, we've been really good about updating those. I don't necessarily agree with all of them, however, we update the job description and we update the grades. But what we don't update is, is the salary equitable across the board. So does a lieutenant in a grade sixteen make the same as a lieutenant in grade sixteen in another position? Now, that's something we'll have to get into later because it has to do with the salary progression scale and such. So we can't solve that tonight.
We're not going to solve the law tonight, we're not going to put it all on the table and I really appreciate that, so.
The grievance process, I already spoke of that one. One of the other problems that we could probably fix with the stall in the hiring process is if we have rules and regulations that says the merit council can hire people directly off the street that want to become police officers. And that's really not a written rule per se, but you, you have, we have a hard enough time right now finding candidates that even want to do our job. But when we do find them, most of the time, they don't want to go directly into corrections and work. They want to come off the street and go to the academy and go be a police officer on the street. And I think part of that, just hiring straight into corrections, might stall the process a little bit is just finding people that want to do the job.
Thank you, so just to recap, your two successful points are employee representative positions and the diversification of who is serving in those leadership roles and the testing procedures that have been much improved. And your two improvement opportunities would be updating salaries and jobs and grades, positions with grades equitable.
The job description is, all of those are the same, so if you have a lieutenant on patrol, that is the same grade.
Okay.
Across the board within the job description. However, for example, a new lieutenant might be making, well, I'm sorry, an older lieutenant or whatever might be making more money than a captain. We have, we have chiefs that don't make as much money as some of the captains.
So there's equitable, you know, levels of grades and job descriptions and responsibilities should match the salary levels.
If we are, if the job description of the director is to ensure equitable pay, then the pay should be equitable.
And then your second one was direct hiring and direct engagement on employment directly into versus, you know, other paths to employment.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, who wants to go first?
Might as well.
Mr. Broyles?
Yep. Let me tell you, I'm speaking from a position of ignorance, so I ask you, you know, this is early on. First of all, man, congratulations on having a good working relationship. It appears to know you're willing to talk to each other. You have representatives from all of the categories that are necessary from the sheriff's office and working with the merit council. So I commend you, that's not something that, that I haven't seen in the past, and so that's a very good thing. There are two things, as I read through the procedures, for lack of a better description of them, that kind of stood out to me and it's just I don't understand, don't have to have an explanation tonight, but perhaps later. And one is classified service grouping, civilian personnel, you go into great detail about the process. We're promoting through the ranks in the sheriff's office, but the civilian personnel, it says absolutely nothing about that process, the hiring process, the, the promotions process and that kind of stuff. I've heard rumors about why that, why that group is in there now, but if they're going to be in there, they're in there. And so we've got to be able to address those.
So that would be one of your improvements?
That would be the opportunity for an improvement, remember, I'm a bill of duty, I know nothing, and so I'm able to say these things without fear of favor. The second thing I noticed is that you do have a reserve program, but it's not mentioned anywhere in here. And that's cool, you don't have to, but say I'm not going to. You can't completely omit it from any discussion whatsoever. If you want to have them in here and say, this in no way applies to reserve personnel, then say that. Otherwise, they're kind of hanging out there on you, you don't know quite, quite what's going on with that. So those are the two things that I think are just interesting to me as I read this. And again, I apologize if these are things that you've already discussed in great detail, but those are things that just kind of popped up in my reading.
And the whole point of having both the civilian representative on this body as well as a, a junior commissioner that's been on the job seven weeks, they are fresh eyes. And, and even Commissioner Beeler and I are kind of new to it, but we've been around for a little bit. That's the point, the point is to say, you brought up, it looks like two improvements potentially is about civilian promotion and, and how that works within the system and reserve programs and personnel either being included and under the same world or not.
Yes, I just didn't see the same processes in place for the civilian personnel. And I didn't, I didn't see any mention of reserves, even if it's only to omit their inclusion, that makes sense from a legal perspective. And the last thing, if I may take point of preference in this, on page four, we talk about the council members' requirements and we talked about post, and all of us who put in the academy, now it's post-certified, and I just want to mention that that's a peace officer standards and training commission, not a police officer. That's one of those little things that kind of gets into certain people's skin.
All right. Commissioner Beeler, thank you very much.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, thank you, I was just asking if you or Mr. Broyles could recap his first point, but I got it now, thank you.
Would you, while you have the microphone, would you like to?
I'm still learning, thank you.
Okay, who's next, Ms. Taylor, Ms. Oster?
Just to clarify on the reserves, I guess that's something we do need to omit because they do not fall in the merit council.
I assume as much, I just wanted to make sure that you mentioned that they don't.
Right, yes.
Simply explain.
Okay. In agreeance with Chief Rible and Crystal and even what Gabe had to say, the merit council office as well as the merit council, anytime recommendations or suggestions are brought to us, I do feel that that is something that we work well together with. When anything like that of sorts, whether it be job descriptions or anything, that that is always something that myself, my staff or the merit council have worked well together with. The other, I guess, on the positive side is, as Chief Rible had said in this day and time, it is really extremely hard to get applicants to apply for the sheriff's office. I do feel that we've continuously been able to provide applicants for them to interview even in these times. For example, just since January the first, the sheriff's office has lost over a hundred and forty merit council or merit-covered employees through the merit system. So we've been able to continuously provide applicants to interview for those positions.
And your two improvements?
Improvements definitely would be the communication and working together, bringing the suggestions, recommendations. That's kind of been eliminated with this new HR department. Coming to us to, you know, try to work together because it's not there. The second would be recruitment. The sheriff's office does not do any type of recruiting as far as sending applicants to us. You know, to that through the process, through the merit system. There's, I don't even know that they have a recruiting officer to, you know, when people call us and have questions, we don't know who to refer them to be able to answer those questions.
Okay, so just to recap, you feel like the successes are administratively, the suggestions they brought have been open and accepted by both parties and you've been able to work through those. And applicants, although hard, you have been able to find them in some way, shape or form and you've made them available and that's worked out okay. And two improvements are communication between the two parties in a, in an effective way. And recruitment, you kind of feel like you're on an island of, of you got to find them all yourself and there's not a lot of cooperation of recruiting.
Recruitment and retention, if we can add those one, because the turnover is, like I said, since January first alone, the number of applicants.
How many?
A hundred, over a hundred and forty since January one.
Wow.
Of twenty twenty, yes, and that's merit-covered employees only.
All right, thank you very much. Who would like to go next, Ms. Oster?
Right, am I only?
You're on, you just have to kind of get close to the mics.
So I'll go with the job descriptions. I mean, I think we do work well, we always try to ask Crystal or we try to ask one of the officers that's there, talk about if the sheriff comes, we've asked him a couple of times about job description changes and that kind of stuff. I had felt like at the beginning, we had a pretty open dialogue. That has, that's changed. So my main issue is definitely the communication. That's been a real, a real issue. And so as a merit council member, just so everybody knows, this is not a paid position, this is a volunteer position. And it's become pretty much a full-time job, honestly. And so, you know, I rely on, and I've tried to explain this to the sheriff so he would understand where the merit council's coming from, we're not in there day to day. So I'm not in the office knowing everything. So we rely on Ms. Taylor, who does a fabulous job giving us information that's coming from the sheriff's office. And, you know, I wanted to have that open dialogue because I felt like that was important to have between us and the sheriff's office, and Crystal does a great job when she brings all this stuff up to us. But there's definitely a breakdown in communication. And what to me, it looks like as a council member, it looks like a lot of wasted time in semantics. And that's where I think that my level of frustration is at. Because I, I came and asked to sit down and have a meeting with the sheriff, with Ms. Lisette, with Ms. Taylor. And let's try to hash some of this stuff out before we got to this point. So I feel like there's been about five months that really has been wasted on trying to move forward. Because my main objective is these officers, their protection, making sure that they have what they need and feel the support that they need from the merit council, because that's my role. And so, and, and I think I've mentioned Crystal many, many times, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I've mentioned, how can we get the information out to the officers so they know what the merit council does? I mean, I would like invite every single officer we have here and like lay it out to them. I'm good with that because I want them to know that we're here for them, fighting for them. That is the whole reason that I do this. That's the whole reason that the other members do this. And that's the reason Ms. Taylor does it. And then probably the recruiting, I've brought that up many times in the meetings that I really feel like that there needs to be. We really have to think outside the box because this is not a job that people are beating down our doors to come to. It's not like we pay them a lot, it's not like they've got great benefits, it's not like they're safe when they go out every single day. So let's do something, let's come up with some, and I feel like that's the time that we could be using our energy with the sheriff's office to say, what can the merit council help you with to recruit and bring this in and think outside the box? And this is where I feel like this has been wasted, this is a waste of time, I'm there. So those are probably my, those are probably my big issues.
Thank you very much, just to recap, some successes have been the job description reforms. And what started out as an open dialogue and kind of good working relationship at the beginning, that was a success. But since then, communication, some improvements would be communication, dialogue, both with the administration and a greater awareness of the officers. And then really the board member position being all-consuming and, and overwhelming at times. And then recruiting and retention. Okay, great, so we're finding a lot of common ground here, which is exactly the point. Would you like to chime in on any of these, sir, Mr. Rivers? So successes are not improvements?
I did not have an opportunity as far as homework assignment, but I would agree with what other folks have said. I do believe that the merit system has done a really good job in getting a number of applicants to us because we have hired a whole bunch of folks in the last year. I do believe too that they've done an excellent job in facilitating a number of processes and promotions and things like that. Although that don't, and I do agree with them that there, there certainly needs to be a communication change between the merit system and the sheriff's office. I've worked through all the administrations and unlike maybe some of the other folks, I have been involved with the HR process, I've communicated with the merit system since nineteen ninety-five. I think is the first time I sat down on interviews with the merit system. And what I would say is that our communication isn't as fluid as it has been. There's not as much continuity in the process between the two agencies or, well, between us and, and the merit system. And the other thing that I would just say is that I think by sitting down and having these meetings and everybody talking and working towards the same process, I do think the, the system will become a lot more fluid. I think the same desires are there, I think it just, right now, I don't think that they, we came together and communicated it as clearly as we need to.
Thank you, sir, so I'm hearing a lot of the same thing, the applicants, they have come even in a really tough time and the merit council has, has worked hard to fill as many positions as possible. And the, and the process and the promotions, they've really been able to, to aid in that, which has been really successful. Communication seems to be a common theme that everybody's talked about. And, and thank you for saying that this committee has some value that maybe helped bridge the gap, so, thank you, sir. I think everybody's spoken except for our commissioners now. Our commissioners are obviously even newer to this process than, than our members, but is there anything based upon just reading the information or anything you wanted to share at this point leading up to?
I will, just based on looking at the hiring process, it looks like it's very thorough and fair and would produce quality applicants. Like there are, you know, quite a few levels that applicants have to go through in order to continue to, to be able to have employment with the sheriff's office and be a merit employee. And so I do think it looks like it's thorough and fair. And just obviously the importance of the merit council or the merit system and the sheriff's office relationship, that it offers those employees protection through fair hiring processes and promotions and grievances and all that. So I, I, I'm glad that there is a relationship there, especially when you go, you can go through quite a few administration changes as were referred to earlier.
Any improvements that you see up top your head?
Dare I say, communication.
That's okay, we'll add it to the list.
Just from what I've been hearing. Obviously, you know, to have a good working relationship, communication is key. communication is key. And so that just goes for anything in my opinion. So just to add to that.
So hiring process, fair and thorough, and the importance of the relationship through many administrations have been successes and communications on the improvement. So, okay, thank you. Mr. Beeler, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I'm just kind of processing through what's been said by the committee. There seems to be a consistency on the successes side. A good, a good working relationship in terms of changes, job titles, promotion, processing of the volume of turnover, all of that seems to be a good thing. On the recommendations, if there's a, if there's a pattern, a theme, I think I hear from one side, we'd like to see processes improved, changed. And from the other side, it's communication. We'd like to see better communication.
Okay, process and communication is the theme. And, but to identify the working relationship is key. I'll chime in on the last bit of this. I have read this time and again, and I've sat in on at least one of the meetings and listened to, read some other minutes. And so I had a chance to sit down with really both sides. I think that the most successful part of this relationship is that despite the fact that everybody thinks that they're on a different page, everybody's on the exact same page. They just don't know. And they don't, I don't know if that's communications or just relationship or turf wars or, you know, fiefdoms of employees or things, whatever. But when I talk to everybody individually over the last several months, everyone has the same common goal, and that is the officers. And it's not about personal structure or administrative roles, whatever. It's core, at its core, you are all on the same page. But I think everybody's talking a different language sometimes. And I think that's really encouraging to know that the bones are good. How we wrap it is the process. One of the things, I'm going to just offer that as my one main success point, that I think they're closer together than we are apart. I think my biggest improvement, and this is something I've heard from many of the rank and file officers as well as really both sides of the teams here, is more transparency and accountability in an open way for the process of the meetings, for the board, for the structure and the organization, the governance. And if governance is good, governance is transparent, governance is open and available to everyone, and government, good governance holds back no secrets. And people's opinions don't drive the day, the process drives the day. And then you have people that fill those seats and make, you know, choices. But to, if I could pick one thing, it would be to improve the governance process of the council, the board, and the process in which the grievances maybe go through or the communication may funnel through so that everyone is, if it's open and if it's transparent and everybody's on the same page, then there's never an opportunity to say, we'll see what they're doing behind closed doors, or I heard this, or whatever. That's kind of what we do in county commission. We put it all on the table. We work it out. We hash it out. And there's no, you know, perception of anything other than the common good. So I think that's the one big thing that I'd like to see improved. Okay.